All right, 7:00 AM, 7:00 AM on the forum meeting present. While we, October 23rd meeting of the Wiscasset Plan of Order. First for the business is the approval of the minutes of August 28th, the last time we met. I have one correction. The acting chair was not my wife, she was with me in New Brunswick. We're not on the planning board, we're not, she has to be. I assume it was every double schooler?
Yeah.
So my correction. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, a minute motion. Who has first, second?
Second.
On which one? All those in favor? Oath? Same because I wasn't there good. Next order of business is actually, as you say, John, welcome, obviously, got pretty far. All right, first order is, I'm not sure if you can pass that. Akeir, going?
I'm here.
I'm here, please come to the desk. You introduce yourself and tell us what you're doing.
Uh, my name's Jared Myers, I'm the sole member owner of Dr. Brewing. I brew beer currently at my home in Blue Bay. And I'd like to use 111 Main Street as a taproom.
And that's just a tap, not a brewery?
It will be licensed as a brewery. It'll be a small brewing system, which I reuse for exhibition purposes. But there won't be any volume of beer brewed there, probably just a few times a year for a small batch.
The project would require a site plan review. He has submitted a application. I remember there are panelists, see. When I request for waiver? An request for waiver that I updated on October 3rd is, I want to have a copy. My request to grant a waiver for a site plan review at 111 Main Street, proposed site in my business. Sure, I'd say it would come back. I have a site inspection with this. Uh, this is a non, this up to the.
There was an update, there was a letter.
Uh, a new waiver this. Nothing we've ever done before, so. First thing we do is make a ruling on a, on a requested waiver. You know, motion to grant or deny? What's the reason for it? The proposed building or expansion, the existing building will not significantly change the nature or intensity of use of the exterior. Of any existing structure. Uh, buildings most recent use or is a gallery and I like to use it as a taproom for my brewery currently operating in Blue Bay. And it's included a sketch of the area, which is 2,071 square feet, his measurements and the lease is 2,051. Is that a motion to deny? I wouldn't dare. I'm sorry, but I wouldn't dare make a motion on that. I've never done it before, so. Is you put it next, we either have to approve it or deny it. All right, all those in favor of granting the requested waiver? Signify the voting, yea. All who oppose? Request waiver is denied. So you want to go through the process of a site plan review. Which suggests you ask for a waiver, come back with a request for waiver of the site plan. And related. Uh, things related to that, such as the contours, that's it. And because exactly the reasons you asked for. It's not that they're not going to give a rule, and these I can't, a waiver can't guarantee well, but we have a task based on not changing exterior boundaries and exterior needs of the building.
So I'm sorry, I guess I, I missed the syntax here, what?
Yeah, your syntax was out basically. You need to, you need to read the ordinance and ask for a specific waiver, but in this case, you want to get a require, uh. Didn't drink a bottle of water. You want to request a waiver for site plan, recent survey. And other parts that would go with the survey, such as contours. Nothing. And the reason being, you're not changing the structure of what you're calling, which you know there. Then, we would go over your actual application, you do have to. Either, again, ask for a waiver from us. For certain review, review criteria, which are listed in the ordinance, this is the application ordinance, this is. Review and do the review there. And, um, if you think something should be worried, again, ask for a specific waiver in advance. And then you either grant or deny any waivers, and considering the size of it, we'll probably pass it off to the contract man. It would be, and she means, as we say, sheep works every day when it goes in the. All right. Hope Amy can, if she's overwhelmed, we've got, but that's where we stand.
Okay, I guess I'll see you next month. This is the second meeting, it's the next.
All right, any questions?
Um, I don't think I do.
Have an afterthought, feel free to contact and let me know yourself.
Yeah, I'm probably being controlled by the very tomorrow.
Okay, all right, dude.
Thank you for business, Tucker Chevrolet. They didn't take all the arrows.
Yeah. The Indian Kurt Blue Bell was part of Real Estate Group, representing the project on behalf of Tucker Chair Ken and Tucker Chevrolet. It's okay if you all put up this plan, higher contrast, point of view elements, the same as the light white plan. Appreciate you having this workshop meeting, so we could make sure we know what we're doing in the corporate five mile south of David Row. But in general, we're looking to do a 22,000, 100 square foot, give or take dealership service center for Chevrolet vehicles. Over there to cross Route 1 from Norm's used cars and the Wiscasset Trading Post. Probably know the site, it's been cleared of trees, opened that right up. Some of you may not even know there was a house in there. House was built about 1970. The house is on, the house is vacant now, was unwell, septic. However, there is a sewer and water both available from Route 1 that the dealership would tap into, as well as all the overhead power is available there. We got through a couple of iterations for the site. Had a single entrance, entrance off of Route 1. That would be a little bit further north than the existing house driving, which is closer over here. We'll just have the one entrance. Customers could come in and park up front, they could go straight to the service center, we'll do a covered area where they can move the check in. And then there's some additional customer parking. And then this could be customer parking or it could be vehicles that were just, if they didn't have room for them or whatever on service, they could come straight here. The parking, additional service parking here. Employees can get more service out back. This over here would be the principal parking for vehicle inventory. And then what we've suggested tonight is to have additional, really non-stripped, sort of a open area that they could park vehicles in different orientations, to present it to the road in different ways. And that would be up front. We're gonna have two stormwater basins out back, they'd be wet ponds, as the DEP describes it, big clay soils here for that. Still working on that, but we have made our initial contacts with the DEP to do that. The project is over three acres, I'll require a site law permit. Much if you're familiar with those are, you know, fairly rigorous reviews, it's gonna take a while to obtain that permit, but we're gonna get that in as soon as possible. This over here, it shows a kind of the building, the intentions they have, basically I'm gonna call it a pavilion over the stalls. It'll be open sided, but it'll have a peaked roof that would sit over about 100 of the vehicles over here. That'll, one, make it a little bit easier for the owner, for the snowstorms, will have to move every car in the lot. But also provide an opportunity to allow visitors to browse towers underneath, there will be recess lighting above to help the visibility at night. And get out of the elements the rest of the time. The DOT, we reached out to them through SUEL, who are traffic engineers, who they're now Diane Morvito. They determined that it would need a site entrance permit, a driveway permit, but not a full traffic movement permit. Nonetheless, uh, they're gonna, they've done the warrants and they're not gonna require a turn lane condition up here. Real surprising. Um, so we're following up on that, so we would expect to get the DOT permit probably around the end of the year. You can see systematically, I've shown where some vehicles would be up front, we would have a landscaping, yeah, this is thematic, only two of them, we have street trees, we have shrubs and bushes. In front of the display vehicles, unlike what's going on up at, uh, Wiscasset Ford right now. If you will allow me. Do you want to share some additional information? Going back to. The request. Towards this vehicle inventory display up front, as I said in my letter. The owner and I came in and met with Emily and Bruce to talk over the ordinance and the setback. Um, the last project I had done in Wiscasset. Was the Napa. Project, um, just down the street. And when I went back, I realized, or I learned, that the setbacks on Route 1 had changed from the, from the center line to the front property line. It's still 75 feet in that zone, which would impact the site plan. We did push all the parking behind that setback line, but we still have this vehicle up, this area up here. And certainly. With the dealership, all they sell are cars and parks, we don't show those outside. But they're showing us out there would be vehicles. The first page of what I've handed out, that's probably difficult to read, but that's a picture from Google Earth. Showing a measurement from the center line to where Norm's cars are, that's about 80 feet. On their sheet, that's just to give a reference of the scale. As proposed, we would be about 70 feet from the edge of David. Or probably closer to 85, 90 feet from the center line of the road. But I think visually, as you drive along, it would be similar to the Norm's layout, the vehicles will look further back, so you can see that in the lower picture. Where those cars are, of course, he's got some park in front of that line. On the next page. Some of the things that you'll see is, uh, right across the street at the Wiscasset's trading facility. They've got a big display of kayaks right out front. They sell kayaks, or it's a big bulky item, and so they've got it displayed out there, kind of like Norm's cars are just beyond it. Again, that's their inventory, moving a little to the next page, out in front of the true value. In this picture, they have lawn tractors, lawn tractor trailers, driving up there tonight, I saw some of those contracting trailers. Again, it's all out up on the road, and that's basically how you can display large, bulky inventory items, it's a lot harder. On the third page. This is a picture, uh, two pictures from Wiscasset Ford. The first one, the top one there, shows how landscaping can be utilized to help soften the impact, it's not all vehicles right up there. We would do something similar, I'm gonna say better, in front of this shop, not that they did a bad job of casting any aspersions, but I think we could have a greater variety of acts. The bottom one, you can see how some of those vehicles that are on display are put at various angles so that you can kind of see them in. Broadside, sideways, what have you, so folks who drive by get more of the sense of the cars that are just lined up. Facing the road. Similarly, on the next page, the Atlantic Motor Car. Site. Their vehicles are, that is creative, but you can see from the street view and the plan view, they're. Set up a little bit sideways or angled to the street, I think that's, uh, you know, really a nice way to get their vehicles displayed. And then this last page. Pictures nine and 10. I put those in there and asked Emily to help and Bruce, uh, help me understand the most recent project that was approved under the current ordinance. And it's the Dollar General there on that side. And, um. In this instance, when the building is constructed, it was essentially set back further from the road than any of the buildings that exist or that remain. But they did have that double row of parking between the building and the street. And I recognize why they would do that, every retailer would want to do that. But we, to be clear, we're not asking to have any customer parking in this setback. So. Any questions, take your feedback from the board tonight. So we can go into final design. Of course, I did include, uh, this rendering of what the building is look like in the package. And I think we're pretty much standard right now for a lot of dealerships, and Chevy and GM dealerships going on. As well as some. Somebody's, I look at fans all the time, right, he's probably too deep elevators, a little bit harder to read, so I'm glad I was able to provide this more colorful version. Yeah. Be a dead horse, after you get, uh, feedback input and talk about vehicle inventory.
Do you remember Route 1 in that section belongs to the state of Maine or the amusement?
That's right.
Do they, not everything, the state owns the fee of Route 1 or is it an amusement?
That's the state.
State guys on the fee?
I believe.
They don't all. Is that what? You know, you have to go through the full site plan.
Oh, yeah.
Recent boundary survey, and the total, changing trees, so.
Yeah, no, we do have a completed survey, we'll have boundary. And, uh, that is why we're doing this. This falls off to the back, more than that, so we'd be making up the grade here. This pretty much fits within the limits of clearing that's already occurred, it took just this, this quarter. And these, maybe set out wise, you fit within it. And like I said, we would have to go through the DEP, we'll have a lighting plan, a landscape plan to go along with this.
Can you clarify, excuse me, what you said at the beginning about the traffic engineer and exactly what has been approved? You said not the, not required turning lane or?
Yeah, right now.
Done it, it's the traffic engineer done a traffic study, the volume of traffic that exists over there at this point?
Yep. So they've done the trip generation and accounts on the road. To determine, again, whether or not that would be warranted. We've submitted all the information to DOT for review with the library entrance permit. And, you know, like all agencies right now, we're kind of grinding too. But we don't expect anything significant to come from that, based on our early discussions with the region engineer and student land re, who's on the way up there.
Other question, sorry, just what the E P asked. Another thing I asked is, on your, when you cut like wood out, you had, they let you, DOT let you cut right up the road like that, now though? They wouldn't move on?
Uh, so the best I know is they didn't go beyond the property line or the right of way line with the trees, I think they were already cleared back to that, to that level. And then within his side of the property line, he can sort of clear as much as he wants. I'll be more interested in what the DEP has to say. No, DOT is fine, I think they like more open and better.
Yeah.
Yeah. So hold on, anyone?
Go easy on him.
I'm gonna hold back on it now. This is where.
You want to?
De-DeP now and I make it easier on you when I come back.
I'm making, what do you want him to know? Oh, no, this is pre-application, he's just telling us what he wants to do, what you asked me, at this point, he, I'm not asking for a waiver or anything. So you get to ask questions or reading ordinance or anything else? If you have a concern on. Now there's going to be burnout questions on all normal packages. All those trees are going to be converted into paper for his application. Maybe if you would. I appreciate all the pictures, measurements, and stems from the discussion, I know about setback. We're just gonna have to work with that, the fact that it's all over the place. We can't help that it's changed, one, that it's changed, two, if we somehow, as we in the plan board somehow missed that in an application. I have to. Do you want to, the reason I was asking about whether it's a fee or an amusement? Because it's. Yeah, that's a way to quote property line, that's a possibility. Yeah, once that train comes on, right out the window, remember where it was going with that? Oh, and as far as cars being parked technically in the right of way, that's not a planning board issue, that's a code enforcement issue.
Oh, no, no, it's not in the right of way.
Well, Norm's is, I'm pretty sure Norm's is.
Oh, I know about that, I think he's just outside of it. Yeah.
I don't know, maybe.
I think he is. Um, but I'm more worried about me, we're not in the right of way, this is right away on here, you know. We're beyond that, we're about 70 feet from the edge of the travelway, but, uh. See, on this one. Still, where you couldn't see it, this line, where you can't see, right in front of these spaces, that would be the 75 feet setback from the front property. What we're looking for is to have these display areas with vehicles between the front setback, or the front property line and the 75 foot setback. And again, that's not intended for customer parking at all.
Sorry, I don't understand.
Yeah. We did get a favorable read from the code officer, um, that not being the same thing, the definition of the setback talks about buildings, parking spaces, or the regulated area.
I played a part of that, I'm not sure if you've copied that, I just reviewed it. Violently. If you park a car, it's a parking lot. And I believe, we had that discussion earlier, didn't we, at least the DEP says if you park a car, it's impervious to service.
Definitely impervious, but again.
Nobody's saying, didn't you tell me? That the DEP considering car parked on the surface is. Nobody's saying, didn't you tell me that the DEP considers a car parked on the surface as impervious?
Or be, be some, I, everyone misses deal, but ours is not.
Okay.
I don't want you to disagree with vinyl. But again, my.
Definitely be okay.
My, my point, again, is that this is all they sell. And to display it, and again, consistently with the other dealerships.
I totally understand.
So what I want to go away from here is a solid sense from the entirety of the board whether or not we'll come back.
So in the code, part of where the stems, there's a couple of places where this stems from in terms of where things are located on Route 1. Pre, I want to say it's 2011, 2012 timeframe. The setback was measured 75 feet from the center line of Route 1 in the commercial district. That changed to be 75 feet from the roadway, but we, the roadway setback, but we don't define what roadway is. In the setback definition, it's either from mean high water or the property line, which is a vast difference, both, you know, even on this property, but also looking at the Dollar General site. You know, it was, the parking is, I don't remember what I wrote it in here. But it's six feet from the property line. And then, sure, 26 feet from the Route 1 line at its closest point, and that's just me scaling it. So that's not an actual dimension measurement. The six feet from the property line is, because it's shown on the site plan, which I copied to the board as part of my memo. I will say, when Bruce and I met with Kurt, that plan is already a change from what was originally shown. They had skipped, you don't mind, can I use your? Originally, when they came in, they had squared this off, and it was basically coming down and across. And there was parking lines, and so they, I said, you would need to scale that back. If we're talking, if it's going to pass the smell test, it needs to actually look and feel and act as what they're describing. And so, you know, I think Kurt has done that in that they've cut off the area that they don't need, and they have, you know, significantly reduced the number of vehicles that would be upfront compared to what they could get if they squared it off and actually had street, you know, 93 angle parking. So I would say, you know, based off of what the planning board has decided in the past, you know, part of my question is, with Dollar General, have you set a precedent? And maybe that's a question for the town attorney, even if it was inadvertent. Is that a precedent that was set with the $2019 Dollar General? I don't think there's been any other plans for properties that are completely, you know, vacant and have been developed that we can look at, because even the main tasting center, those buildings are, and I think the parking already existed, the parking that's behind, I think they just reconfigured. So we can't really use that one as an example either. I don't know if there's others that you'd like me to look at to see where we have required this. But when it comes to use of.
It's interesting where they keep the rentals and the trailers. That was a second area, that was a secondary rule, I don't remember one.
How you look, but I mean, recently, I think I mentioned that. Where it stands now.
I mentioned it, where it is now. I was asking the wording on it a little. If this says roadway, we really may get a suitable definition for roadway. That's a sport to get, at least to compromise it to decisions. I can say that I can remember way back in comprehensive planning times. It's a strong opinion, it's an independent opinion of that. But all, all car dealerships, all stores should be totally screened them like that. No one, it's not applied. That was before pretty much everything on Route 1. The cheese rule is done, but other stuff is, that's a good idea. If we go, if roadway can be essentially, it's pavement, it's a travelway, you're criticals already.
Because we define, so in the schedule of dimensional requirements, we have minimum lot size, road setback, and then side interior setbacks. So it's not a front yard property setback or a property line setback, it's a road setback, but then it's not defined in our philosophy.
Trafficway or anything.
In the 2008 or so ordinance, there was a narrative paragraph that said all between Route 144 and Birch Point Road, all buildings will be set back 75 feet from the center line. And then, I'm not a resident, I don't follow everybody, but between the that and the next ordinance that I have, that narrative paragraph went away, and a table went in, and the table had a road setback. And it still had 75 feet in the commercial zone, and 10 feet in every other zone. And so clearly, 10 feet from the center line doesn't apply. And then 75 feet from what? And it looked like they took the definition of setback from the shore and zoning ordinance definition and then put buildings and other things in, and then that became the definition of setback. And so, just me from the outside looking in, it looked like it converted that to a table, which makes sense. But then the roadway setback, which I've not seen before in a table, maybe didn't get massaged completely. But again, I'm not asking if where it'd be parking. And if it makes sense to chair of the board where this vehicle display is happening, we could maybe do a material change with favors or something where the car's going to park to help further set that up different from drive aisle and parking areas. You know, some of the, some of the folks, where Norm sometimes parks on gravel, that's not what we want to do. There's got to be a surface that's durable that can be plowed.
I don't know if this is going to be an issue to anyone, so. And the only thing that's going to be an issue, I mean, I, in lacking a definition, I fall back uncertain. There's some training. Call for mine, a road means the center there, a call for stone means the center. On the other hand, we also introduced a roadway in there, which.
So, yeah, the road, we call it a road setback, and the definition of road is a route or track consisting of a bed of exposed mineral soil, gravel, asphalt, or other surfacing material constructed for or created by the repeated passage of motorized vehicles. Then we have the definition of setback, which is the nearest horizontal distance from the normal high water line of a water body or tributary stream or upland edge of a wetland or property line to the nearest part of a structure, road, parking space, or other regulated object or area. We don't actually define what a road setback is. So where do you measure that from?
I have to, you don't understand. I'd be happy to use edge of travelway as the setback point, as the point of measurement, if that works for you.
You're, I didn't hear what you said.
I'm willing to, based on that, use the edge of travelway, edge of.
Okay, thank you.
Breakdown, whatever's there, it's not a sort of pavement, but it's not also the bottom of the ditch, it's. Which you can safely pull off onto, if it's a shoulder out now, so don't remember, because it must have a shoulder there. So it's probably pretty close to the edge of pavement. And if you can work with that. I mean, I agree, your materials need to be on display, and they need to be setback enough to maintain a sense of, see, prettiness and. I have the same plan, but you need to grab your notches as you try to get down those, what was that?
Right. Emily, did you say the setback is now 60?
No.
No.
Oh, it's still 75?
Right.
No, I, I heard you say 60, that was what you measured it from?
That was so, I don't know when I said 60, but it definitely didn't apply to.
Well, the reason I ask is Bruce, Bruce ain't where, thought there might have been a new, a revision to the ordinance that changed the number. Is there any brand new ordinance?
I have the 20.
To your new reasoning.
Still missing a section.
Uh, still 75 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the latest revision was a side setback from 10 to 15.
It may be that what Bruce was thinking, so there's a note three attached in the commercial zone. So Route 1 commercial road setback is 75 feet, preferred to note three, where stairs, ramps, deck, and enclosed porch is not greater than 64 square feet in area may be located within said road setback zone as long as they are more than 60 feet from the center line and meet all other sideline setback requirements. So that may be where Bruce got that 60 coming from.
All right, so I'm working with 75 feet from the travelway or shoulder. Or travelway, 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 edge of pavement. Sure. Edge of pavement is easy because it was sort of.
I know, because it doesn't become an irregular line, so.
Right.
It nearly is a regular line.
Yeah, but definitely, so we'll work with that.
So it's 75 feet from the edge of pavement, Route 1, not from the middle?
Right, correct.
Edge of pavement. It says the road, and where it comes from. Definition of road is like, basically, that's a travel.
I'll be ready to have, I can work with that. Any other comments, questions? I've improved what we call seeing a lighting ordinance. There's a, we can do a lighting plan, but it's just, I don't expect you to ever like trespass me. I was wondering about. You know, where are requirements.
Shouldn't these days, I know we don't have it, these days. I, we are, I think the Texas guys speak.
Well, there'll all be recessed.
Yeah.
I don't think we have a separate ordinance, but I thought it describes it in.
The requirements, something. But it's not specific.
Page, I think it's page 139, it's section 9E4. Building and site illumination. And it talks about that all light fixtures shall be shielded or hooded so that the lighting elements are not exposed to normal view by motorist pedestrians or permanent adjacent dwellings. And then it talks about a facade can be illuminated with soft lighting in low intensity that does not draw or bring attention to the building. Building entrances can be illuminated using recessed lighting and overhang in soffits or by use of spotlighting focused on the building's entrances. The light source shall be concealed. So check section 9E4.
9E4, okay. Chances are pretty good DOT will want us to eliminate the entrance. So we'll give everything back, but we might have to have one right up there. Straight up to that one, yeah. Okay. Please.
That's the same building as they go down to Belfast, right?
I'm sorry?
That's the same chimney building you put in, down, as they go down to Belfast, Route 1.
I'm not sure, this is kind of starting to be scratched, so maybe it's similar. It's going to look the same, it's going to have the same elements and be there. Same finishes, same siding, same, you know, colors. Yeah, they want them all the same, which I disagree with, but.
Because I've seen a lot of them, everyone has same, what do they call it?
Tower.
You know, either side of the doors. But I think one thing that is, I, I've got to put the file, have that service pay right up there. And because the way this works out, when they pull in, it'll be pretty clear. You can just slide slightly to the right, that service sliding to the left, and we buy a car. Okay. I think I've got all the information I need, well said. I would expect it probably wouldn't be back in November, but hopefully in December. And then we would be also to current review with DEP. But by that point, I would think we'd be moving forward. It tends to be break the ground pretty much as soon as, well, DEP permit and weather permits. 2024 start. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.